Good morning. Thank you all for joining us for this audit meeting. Sorry, you're not all on vacation, but somewhere else, but we're glad to have you here. We're going to speak President Randall and Dr. Carter today, they have traveled. I mean, but we'll be surprised at what we do today. Maybe we won't miss your address while posted. The trustees have had an opportunity to review the general agenda. Thank you for doing that work in advance. Do we have enough? Are we?
One, two, three, four, five, seven, eight, nine.
I know already he's on his way in, as well as Christian. Fair motion on the general consent, but gentlemen, go with what?
Always.
Thank you, Maria. And any debate or discussion? Is that?
I'm saying. Got it. Over and out. Thank you.
Thank you. Um. So I'll have a vote. All favors say aye. Any opposed? Thanks. Thank you for your support for the items on second agenda. Well, now turn to our action agenda. Heidi, Heidi Wood Mary, by the way, she should advance that will introduce item 3.01.
Good morning, everyone. We always love hearing Heidi.
I know. I actually don't want to come up. I have significant hair.
Today I have three bits of good news, three really generous contributions to the Fox apples. This is still at school, no sense, we write that a long time. Anyway, we have three wonderful gifts that we would like to seek with the overall help given for naming. In recognition of a generous $2 million gift from Memorial Foundation, we propose honoring them with the name of the Commons in the Cafe. I just do all three at once.
Yes, please.
Okay, so second is a generous $1 million gift from Ruth Eleanor Bamberger and John Ernest Bamberger Memorial Foundation. And we recommend honoring them with the naming of the Medical Education Suite. And then in recognition of a generous $8 million gift from Tim D., that is Cartwright D., we recommend naming a classroom in honor of the George K. Cartwright and Lewis.
Wonderful. Thank you. Is there a motion to approve item 3.01, the naming of the facilities at the Spencer Fox Center? They give a sound? Second?
Sure.
Steve, we have a motion in a second to approve item 3.01 in the debate or discussion. So then, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
These are easy ones.
I know. Thank you, Heidi, and thank you for all the work that you do for the institution. We have the resources to do the good work we do. Um, on by Don Middleton, Executive Director of the Constant Cancer Hospital, to introduce item 3.02 for proton vaults. He's very excited.
And I'll just a little quickly introduce.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you. Regina Hall is the Chief Operating Officer for Hospital Clinics. Lovely to be here today. I'm here in Valmell again, because our second doctor of cancer decided to present the second proton therapy room that we would like to request today at board of trustees. Proton therapy is a type of therapy for radiation pathology. It treats and destroys cancer cells used for typically various cancers like brain cancer, breast, prostate, liver, lung. It's super exciting for us to be there today to request because of the need. We are the only proton therapy in the state and region. And not just treating those, we treat the after patients as well. We had actually support side of Dom and the team a constant cancer set plan for the second therapies. We need it actually to stop the question of, you know, sometimes I work for today.
Thank you, Gina. Good morning. So as Gina indicated, proton therapy is one way in which we treat cancer. We introduce a focus being of photon energy aiming it toward the tumor developed mass who will deliver it. We, University of Utah, are the only proton center in the Mountain West. The closest to other proton centers are on the west coast, Phoenix, Oklahoma City. And so we have a large placement area and we are full. Go to the next slide. Here, you're familiar with the Constant Cancer Complex. This is the first vault, which has been open for about four years and a month. We are completely filled. We are not able to take care of the patients that need our care. They have to travel when we can't midway. The second vault is right next to it. Gina indicated we planned for this four years ago. We dug out part of the mountain preparation for this. And here you can see a floor pan of the new vault. It's essentially a three-story cement bunker that houses a proton therapy unit. Next slide, this project is an expensive one, and the construction portion is 13.6 million. Again, for a three-story cement and steel bunker. And the equipment, the accelerator, the proton accelerator, in excess of 26 million. And the total project cost of 43.1 million. Again, for patient care here, it's the University of Utah, here in the Mountain West, to just request your approval for this project. Any questions?
So, Don, you're full, I believe, in 10 to 12 patients per day. The term on this is how quick?
2.5 years would be the term of investment base. It's a patient necessary and financially lucrative.
The catch scenario is all the way to the bay.
It is. We treat patients from Montana, Wyoming, Idaho, Nevada. Very valuable basis. In fact, we have to be very using or selective to ensure that we are providing this therapy for those who truly need it. So, yeah.
With children, you get their organs and their bodies are so compact, you feel children weight. Right, you're good.
Yeah, protons are very predictable and their target is very precise. They're to protons.
Don, where will we put number three?
Number three, great question. I, we have space at our senior, so they gather in the mist, so that may be the blue eyed third wall.
We really appreciate that question, so I was trying to.
Absolutely.
Any other questions? Thank you. So is there, can I have a motion for two and 3.02, the construction of the Constant Cancer Institute, number two proton vault?
We have. Okay. Move that motion. Oh, second.
Steven, second from David. Thank you so much. You have a motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Our next item is the NHNU Optimization Phase Three. Provost Jason Bryan, Executive Director of NHNU, to introduce 3.03.
We're going to take just a moment and introduce Jason Bryan, Executive Director of the Natural History Museum of Utah. NHNU is dedicated to the education and preservation of environmental history. And really proud of Jason and his team's work on this project. This is a fully funded, five-phase project that's underway to help the museum accomplish their objective in an energy efficient way by reducing the amount of energy needed to operate the museum. Lower resources used and cost to me.
Thanks, and thank you all for allowing me to be here this morning. I'd like to introduce a project that I know some of you have heard already about. This is a project that will help the museums easily achieve its mission. As a science institution, as an institution that values and provides sustainability and environmental protection. This project will allow us to meet our mission in a much more energy efficient way while serving as a model for organizations here at the university and elsewhere that have aspirations to produce their energy usage and produce their carbon footprint. So the project is a strategic priority for the museum itself. In our current strategic plan, we've outlined sustainability and environmental protection as a major priority. And they're doing that in several ways, one of which is through this project here. The project also advances the university's project goals or long-term goals of the Impact 2030 Initiative, reducing carbon footprint and improving sustainability also. Supports the university's Climate Action Plan and and other sustainability goals of the university. There you go. The key factor here is that this project is entirely funded privately to the Alternative Visions Fund. This is a group that has had long, long-range or long-term partnerships with the university, funding other projects on campus that have reduced individual building impacts and increased sustainability across campus. We, we believe that our life for this project will be net positive, especially because this is entirely funded privately. But nevertheless, the reduction of the O and M operations requirements for the museum's building will result in a positive return on investment. Now, the expectation of the Denver Alternative Visions Fund is that the museum will reduce our carbon footprint entirely, we'll eliminate that. And we're going to do that in several phases, several ways. By lowering the actual energy usage of our existing building, by increasing and improving the sustainability and renewable energy production onsite and offsite, and by increasing the, decreasing the overall production, the reliance on fossil fuels of the museum. Now, this project is under progress. It's in progress. Several projects, several phases have already been completed or are in progress right now, including a feasibility and analysis stage to make sure that we're identifying the most optimal systems moving forward. We have engaged in several optimization projects which reduce the end of usage of the existing building. And, and those projects, as I said, either were defeated or under progress or in progress now to a total cost of about 2.5 million dollars funded entirely by the Alternative Visions Fund. And as you can see here, this is part of the optimization, the building optimization projects here that we're in progress now. We're about 65% complete of converting all of the traditional lighting technology in the building to lower energy usage, highly efficient LED technology. So this request this morning is to approve phase three of the project, and this is a rather significant, bold part of the process in which we'll install a geothermal field, ground source heat pump field underneath the visitor parking lot of the museum. And then the, also install the necessary mechanical infrastructure within the building that will support this renewable energy source to heat and cool the building. This is an anticipated cost of about 13.1 million dollars. Again, the Alternative Visions Fund has committed entire or has deeply committed to fund this space entirely. So we anticipate here the project funded, our total construction costs of just more than $9 million. And when we add escalation fees and soft pass, we're looking at a project that's about. This gives you just a quick schematic idea. This is, of course, the top view of the building. This is the Natural History Museum of Utah building. This is our parking lot. The geothermal field will be installed underneath in those in these days here, about 96 wells of about 600 feet deep. This is a test well that we drilled about a year ago. And the results of the thermal conductivity tests were, they indicated a highly efficient system for the exchange. The next phases in the future, just to give you a preview, to complete this project and fully eliminate our carbon footprint will consist of improvements and expansion of our existing photovoltaic capacity, the PV array on the building, the installation of additional photovoltaic panels above the visitor parking lot, and then finally the offsite installation of a solar array somewhere else, which will complete the total elimination of our carbon footprint. So that's, that's a quick summary. Happy to take any questions as we go.
How, how much energy are you looking to produce from that?
Yeah, so it's an interesting question. I'll answer that in a way that is a little different. Our current photovoltaic array right now in the building, which was the largest in Utah when it was installed 10 years ago, it's more than 10 years ago, produces about 13% of our current energy needs. Simply by changing up the photovoltaic panels to newer technology and expanding the capacity of the capital buildings, we can fully produce 50%. So that combined with the offsite array and the bronze system farm will fully reduce our problem.
Okay. How much energy is geothermal at this place? Would you say?
That's a good question that I don't know the answer to. I don't know the individual components of the geothermal itself. I do know that, that we're using a definition of geothermal neutrality that is a highly energy efficient building that can either produce or procure enough radio energy to meet annual energy needs, and with this system is higher than we are.
You know, this is a relevant project. We produce 1% of the state's power. Just the proton vault alone uses tremendous amounts of power. So if we could do something like this, I believe, I'm guarding comments, otherwise geothermal. It's not the worst project on a campus. And so this is really awesome. Thanks. I appreciate that. And this good point is that this is new technology. This is technology that's been used effectively in this already.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you.
Is there a motion to approve the phase three of the National Institution of Management?
I'll make the motion.
Motion, second.
Second.
Wait, Steve, wait, a motion in a second. In the debate or discussion? So then, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Then, thank you. The motion passes. Appreciate the good work, work that's been done there. Jason, so thanks for that. Uh, well, now Chris Eisenberg. Oh, we, we don't, we just want to ask any questions, but at least we don't have any. Uh, we now turn to 3.04, sale of real properties, downtown commons one and two. Danny Wall, could you join us with his administrative director of real estate, who introduces 3.04?
Thank you. We have multiple items today. I'm not sure if you want to vote on each one individually or go through them all and then give us a vote at the end.
Oh, please, yes, we'll do them individually.
Individually, okay, great. So thank you for this opportunity to present us this morning. Like I said, we have multiple items. First, we'll talk about the sale of downtown commons on one and two. These were purchased in the 2009, 2010 fiscal year by some off-campus housing. The university vacated both properties in May of 2025. After a thorough review by operational excellence in our housing group, the assets have been identified as underperforming and they no longer align with the university's housing strategy. As a result, we pursued a transaction. We went out and had both properties appraised and decided to announce that we have an offer right now, $5 million for both properties. The appraised value, combined appraised value is about 3.6 million. So these, these were bid up pretty aggressively. There was a lot of competition. So just to give you a little bit of context, downtown commons one is 11. Uh, let's see, go on one. Downtown Commons one includes 11 units. That's about 15,000 square feet, and it was appraised at 1.5 million. Downtown Commons two includes 17 units. It's over 23,000 square feet, is appraised at 2.1 million. Both properties were marketed slightly above appraised value. The buyer is a strong buyer, can close with cash if necessary. And, and the buyer plans to continue to operate these student housing so that the units aren't actually leaving the pool. They're just, they'll just be owned and operated by someone else. So purchase negotiations and due diligence are currently underway, and we're requesting your approval to move forward. Can I ask you any questions? So we spent a lot of time yesterday trying to dig up that information, and we, we think it was combined less than 2 million. So we, we couldn't find these out.
How long have we been active?
Since about 2010. So, and they're, you know, they're old and a little tired. And Sean, Sean Grubas here as well, we can provide a little more insight on why we chose to sell.
I could not be more excited to talk to you about this. So this property is several miles off campus, which is really a barrier for our students overall. Just the transportation creates an issue. For instance, last year when we were at 99.9% occupancy, the whole business downtown commons was at 75%. So literally all our vacancies were over at downtown commons overall. So it is a property for us to sell overall. It's less convenient for students. It doesn't create, as Danny mentioned, it's just aligned with how we work with everybody right now. So while I'm started to start this, we'll use a little depth, is that thing?
Danny, we, we don't have a, and thank you for that. The buyers, there's no contractual obligation. They're, they're just going to run them out, hopefully the students that yeah, they'll have it in the pool that we can push people.
Yeah, we won't have anything to do with it, but they, they currently operate several small apartment buildings as student housing, and I still plan for these as well. As, it's both, I mean, they, they do pretty well on them, but it's a little bit mission driven too. And one of the, one of the couple, one member was, was married, was just, I think is, is focused on for the week, shooting that.
Yeah, it's a little question about, like, so there are currently guys on this. Do you plan to put back into student housing current camps? I don't know if there's something you guys handle or control, but I think you have to.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not sure exactly where the final name will go, but if you're sure there's a large investment on, well, non-apps too, perhaps, yeah, so. Alright, thanks.
Any other questions? If not, then we have a motion to approve the sale of downtown commons one and two.
Oh, and I'll second.
Christian, appreciate the second. We debate our discussion. Three men, all in favor?
Aye.
Any other? Thank you. Appreciate your work, Danny, and I think then you're still up with.
Few more, yes. Next, we, we have a lease extension for the Department of Pediatrics within the School of Medicine, which occupies space within the primary children's hospital complex. So the initial 10-year lease for this space expired a few years ago, and since then, Pediatrics has been renewing annually. So we've, we helped them negotiate an additional 10-year lease. They, they have no plans to relocate or go anywhere else. And so we were able to avoid some, some year-to-year pricing volatility and this 10-year lease, we were able to realize that about a $2 million savings over the term of the lease when compared to these continued annual renewals. The lease includes a 2.5% annual escalation. Total rent per year is about 1.2 million, and the 10-year total commitment is about 13.8 million. There's about 34,000 feet in the Eccles, or excuse me, yeah, in the Eccles building, which is here, and then the main building. There's about 4,500 square feet. And so this, this lease, this lease aligns with both programmatic needs of Pediatrics and it helps with the university's financial stewardship roles. So, any questions?
Thank you, just the side you sent.
Yeah, Air Mountain.
Oh, it's the building.
Yep.
Do they own the ground?
I think so. I don't know their ground movement.
Some ground lease.
It's a ground.
Ground nation.
From the university.
How long?
Oh, wow. Only long. We looked into it for. One call. Any other questions? Well, is there, can we take a motion then for the lease extension to the School of Medicine, Department of Pediatrics?
Motion.
Thank you, Maria. Second position. We have motion in a second. Any debate discussion? So then, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The motion passed with the victory.
Thank you. And then the last action item is, is a new lease for our AirMed group. And we've got plenty here from the hospital to help present this one. I'll go through some of the real estate stuff, and then Clint can chime in on, on anything else you have questions about. So our AirMed group currently operates out of the Salt Lake City International Airport. And they've been in the same facility since the 1970s, but that facility was actually built in 50s. So it's a 70-year-old metal aircraft, and as you can imagine, it's, it is, this far outlived its useful life, put it that way. The facility no longer, it no longer meets the safety and operational standards of AirMed. In addition to that, the Salt Lake, the lease is expiring, and the Salt Lake Airport is actually mandated that, that we relocate. So to ensure uninterrupted operations and to support the future needs of the program, University of Utah Growth Capital Partners Foundation, or the DSO, has partnered with UHealth to facilitate the development of a new hangar. So the DSO secured a new ground lease with the Salt Lake City Airport, and will develop the hangar. And we were able to get a 30-year initial term, one to five-year options to extend, so we have 40 total years on the ground lease. Under the structure, the DSO will serve as landlord, and UHealth will lease the facility. UHealth will have an option to acquire the facility after the first year of occupancy. And key lease terms include $758,000 per year in rent. The, there's a range there because we haven't received our final construction cost yet. Rent will escalate at 12% every five years. So this lease has been to the hospital board, it's been to the DSO board, university senior leadership and executive trustees already has received approval in all those places. We anticipate occupancy the first year, first quarter of 2027. And this arrangement secures long-term viability for this critical healthcare operation. It also leverages an efficient development financing model through the DSO. Clint, do you have anything you'd like to add?
This is an opportunity also to co-locate the AirMed operations on the east side, so our communications, population, and fly crew that's living on offsite right now. So very optimistic we'll be able to.
Any questions?
So this is a really critical lease for us to get down. So within five to seven years, all this single engine, civil business engine aircraft, there's, therefore, will move because of the demand on the east side of the airport. Eastern most runway is 34R. And so with the growth, growth of private aircraft that you have the outside, all of the real estate, all the land is now, this is a really critical lease for us to get down for the next 30 years. Because if not, we won't have a place to fly, so we'll be all been Salt Lake Beach only, Beach Villa. So this is a vital lease, and well known again, this is.
They call this their beachfront property. The airport calls this their beachfront property. Apparently, it's, it's considered premium. It's on the east side. It's not, that's the, if you can go to the next slide, let's see where it is. So this is, this is big picture north. This is the east side, and then our existing facility is here. They're actually just moving us over, but I think it's because that facility does need to be torn. I know the people would express this, we speak on that.
So we have, we have seven telechopters on one. And there'll be two house to that site.
You know, I mean, since they do about 1600 rooms this year, so we think about the efficiency impact. You were saying, we did 6120. Yeah. Yeah. You're fine. 1500. For you. Yeah. Well, we certainly, the area is large as we serve, we certainly need the capacity and the ability to get transplant pieces, you know, organs and, and patients in the museum itself. Thank you for doing such good work. Thank you. Any other questions? And I asked for a motion to approve the AirMed Salt Lake. Oh, I mean, it's the business. You made a motion.
He was quick.
Second, I, oh, so it's a race. So we, we have a motion in a second to approve. Debate or discussion? Any none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion. Thank you so much. So that closes our action agenda. As we start into the fall, people saying that in August, but as we look forward in this year, just wanted to take a moment to thank everyone on the board for their service and the work that they do outside of this meeting, and support of us, ambassador for the university. We appreciate it and appreciate your guidance as we do a lot of exciting things, and there's a lot of changes in the world of fire education. So a lot to do this year. Welcome to, to the new year. I know that it's a thought towards further about the start of school for our students. So thank you for all of that. I'd also like to, I'd say our condolences to Paige, your family, if that's something you learned from mom. She passed away in July 28th. She has been a great member of this community.
Thank you.
And a good friend.
Yeah, thank you. Appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you. Appreciate it.
Yeah, I was like starting hiding, but then I think then I have no things. I was saying when Chris brings the folders, the beautiful folders that in paper, we're going to give a resolution of appreciation to two of our trustees, who will be sitting off the board. This is, I'll start with Steve. Your last meeting. And Randy, I would love for you to extend your, to the resolution, but I'd like to first say, Steve, how much we have appreciated you on this floor. Your expertise, and I don't want to steal your time to continue your resume, but your your expertise. Your expertise and 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 knowledge and relationships in the city and the and the state. Or your your dogged questions surrounding parking, as you're an access, not just you know, physical access to this institution, to the hospital, to services we provide in order to do. Your expertise and your thoughtfulness and your holy questions have always been so appreciated. And of course, as a friend, an ambassador for this university. So thank you. And now I'll turn to Randy, who'll do a better job.
Well, it's written. Chris wrote this. Whereas Steve Bryce has devoted countless hours of dedicated service to the University of Utah Board of Trustees. Whereas during his tenure on the Board of Trustees, he has served on the Audit Committee, Executive Committee, Financial Advisory Committee, and provided strong leadership as Chair of the Master Campus Master Plan Committee. Whereas he has shared his considerable knowledge, experience, and wisdom as a valued member and a leader on both the Hospital Budget and Finance Committee and the University of Utah Hospital Board. Whereas he has demonstrated broad and enthusiastic engagement across the university, including active participation on numerous advisory boards as a passionate, generous supporter of the arts. Whereas Steve's unique combination of deep experience, sharp insight, collegial spirit has benefited the university immensely throughout his services as trustee. Whereas his collaborative approach, compassionate listening, and steady presence earned him the respect and admiration of colleagues as he fulfilled numerous volunteer responsibilities with grace, energy, and exceptional devotion to the University of Utah. Whereas his enthusiasm and thoughtful contributions were always offered with form and humility, making him a model board member and trusted voice. Therefore, be it resolved that the University of Utah Board of Trustees expresses its profound appreciation and sincere gratitude to Steve Bryce for exemplary service, outstanding leadership, and lasting impact on the University of Utah. And I want to like Katie just ad lib for a second. Because Steve has been a mentor and a dear friend on the board for me, as as Sam and I were walking in, I said, we're losing Christian and Steve today. And those are two gargantuan airs of shoes to fill. Steve and Christian, both you guys. Well, we we love you guys, and and the impact you've had on the university is unprecedented. The time that you guys have spent a few years ago, my phone rings like eleven thirty at night on a Saturday, and Steve is get up at the university right now. I need to show you this. But Steve, I'm in bed in my pajamas. Well, get out of your pajamas and get on up here. So I do, I do what Steve says. But but that that's analogous to just the, you know, the degree to which Steve has been so committed to the good of this university, and I say to both of you guys, like, like, we got we're all gonna have to increase our pace in order to backfill for the incredible contribution. We just love you guys and are gonna miss you in fact.
Thank you.
So, you know, I thought about this day, I thought. And here's kind of the way I would I would be kept. You know, I've had the the opportunity to serve with three university presidents and then in first president. I have made friends that I never thought I would make. I have learned things I never thought I would learn. I've become friends with teams and chairs, and they're actually neighbors in the neighborhood now, as they relocated and moved here. I've created friendships with trustees that will be ever enduring and everlasting. Current trustees to past trustees. I've met and worked with student body presidents, seven of them now, and I've seen how the university has changed their lives and where they've gone. I've traveled from Ireland to South Korea in football games, and then with other trustees. I remember sitting in an embassy in Japan with President Rand when Christian and other trustees bring economic update on what is happening in Asia and the impact the University of Utah campus has in in Sean. I've learned about the vital importance of higher education and how it changes people's lives and communities. I've seen innovation. I've seen research, and I've seen the importance of research. I've seen the advances in health and and what the future looks like and what we have to do. I've served on search committees, and not just that we gone through the process of search, but I've learned and I've grown as an individual as well. I've seen the donor community come together in so many different ways, whether it's a single project or or a building. I've seen how the university enhances arts, and I've seen arts in a different way because of the university. I've seen performing arts. I've seen theater arts in a different way. I got involved in engineering in ways that we never would have because it's one of the most powerful nutrients in the Utah economy, engineers. We've seen the birth of AI, and we really have to be at the forefront of not just AI, but responsible AI. I've I've seen the competitive set. I've seen national changes that come to universities, and I've seen the way that we navigate change as an institution and as trustees and leadership and presidents. I've seen the way that we navigate crises and lots of big crises. So in the middle of the night, the Pac Ten is blowing up. We have a thing that happened on campus against at a bar downtown. And I've seen the way that we come together as a board and as an institution to solve really big and really small issues. I've seen the way that we seek opportunities that this university never stops, and leadership never stops. We always look at opportunities. I had grown, my family has grown, my business has grown. The amount of time it's taken just here, I never would have had a company grow and the leadership grows in the company and be able to do things I never I never could have planned and charted their growth. And they just continued to grow the business as I was as I was volunteering and working here. So in summary, I've been able to work with what I believe are societal enhancements, and and President Randall talks about societal change, but we're societal enhancements. I've been able to work with the changemakers of higher education. And I've been able to work with the builders of better future. So this has been an honor and privilege. The last ten and a half years have been remarkable. And every moment I have savored, and every moment I've tried to put in all I could. So thank you, everyone.
Oh, I don't know that. Only number, don't look very far away. So I hope we continue to be able to.
And I won't think the university will continue on with engineering, the arts.
And now. Christian. As Randy said it best, you know, that it's really tough to see the two of you step away from these positions that you've served so honorably, so well. And the time that y'all put in outside of these walls is enormous. So thank you for your leadership. Thank you for your insight, your calm. Whether you have a lot of volatility, a lot of changes last few years as in athletics, in healthcare, in funding and views about what higher education is and what for our students, whatever. And you have led steadily and thoughtfully and compassion all of them. Thank you so much for your leadership. Again, we know where to find you.
Yeah.
Too far, because your wisdom and and your experience is to show knowledge. So value. So I will ask if I can read the resolution.
Thank you. Whereas Christian Gardner has served with distinction for eleven years as a dedicated member of the University of Utah Board of Trustees, including service as Vice Chair and for the past five years as Chair. Whereas he generously has given time and talent to the university, offering steady leadership, insightful counsel, and consistent good humor through countless hours of service on academic student audit, master campus, plan as Chair, Executive and Financial Advisory Committees. Was there any committee you were not on? Whereas he successfully guided the board through the recruitment of a new university president, which we're very glad we have. That has resulted in unprecedented growth in research, build fabric, support, student recruitment, and retention for the university. Whereas he led the board with integrity and collaboration through complex real estate transactions, bringing expertise, transparency, and kindness to every decision. Whereas Christian has been a tireless advocate for students' championing, championing efforts to keep tuition affordable while safeguarding the high quality of the University of Utah education. Whereas he brought to his roles a deep devotion, a legacy of loyalty, and an unwavering commitment to always placing the university's best interests at the forefront. Therefore, let it be resolved that the University of Utah Board of Trustees extends its profound appreciation and heartfelt gratitude to Christian Gardner for his exemplary leadership, extraordinary service, and lastly, lastly, contributions to the University of Utah. Thank you. I will just echo what Randy says. Steve, thank you. You've been an incredible advocate for the meeting. And from day one, when I joined the board, you were so welcome and such such great insight. So thank you. Christian, thank you. Most of you don't know, Christian and I have a son. My son is married to Christian's daughter. So I look forward to many years with him, and hopefully at some point I'll have grandchildren, right? That's 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 a hope. But I would say Christian is an exemplary with regard to making personal connections with people. And I admire you so much for that. You've done that through leadership through the state, which we will miss that, and we hope that that void we can fill because you've made connections with so many across the state. And so thank you for your absolute great leadership. We admire you, appreciate you, and thank you, Christian. Well done.
Thank you, Dave. You know, I know I should say something, but it's hard to follow Steve. And for eleven years, I've always been in denial on this day because I've seen it come, and I always thought, well, that's gonna be really sad when that happens. I wonder what I'll say. I'm still wondering. But I just, more than anything in the eleven years, I can only say that I've loved working with all of my trustees, with leadership, and with all of all of you. And I can go through the room and maybe all of you went through the the stories from from Larsen boarding me and Laura Bartson when we first started, you know, just so many so many connections. And just know that I love each of you, and I love this university, and I I love the mission in what we're trying to accomplish. And I say we because I really feel a part of the team. And I really want to keep keep it going. And even though I may be getting kicked off the board at too many late parties. Looking tickets. No, I just, but I have a hundred percent commitment to the higher ed and to the students and to the university. And I'm, you know, even more committed today than I ever have been. And I just want to say a-again, I don't want to go on, but just thank you all so much. I have gained so much more than I given. And and even though I've tried to give more, it's it's you catch your bread on the water, so more comes back. And this institution's meant everything. I just want to say thanks. Thanks to all of you, and I've learned so much. Appreciate it.
Going to do a little stage management. Can we do a picture of the two of you with your resolutions for the president's social feed?
Uh, sure. You can convert as five dress code. I feel like harder already.
Let's have the next season up there as well. Alex, Sam, Danny, let's get rid of them too. Maria. All right, let's let's keep keep her on the TV, though. Let's make it on. We still have a lot of women on brand, so we need to save.
Yeah, good. All right, everybody, look at me.
Way to go.
All right.
If we done it the other way, we could have gotten done with it too.
Which is why you did it that way.
Thank you.
Sorry, Chris, I gotta take that. I would, everything Chris would in his senior grade, I said, he always found the pins didn't work.
Yeah. You just wait till you do the teleprompter and graduation, so you may speed it up and go away. Let's take you up.
That was just a sign for you.
Yeah, that's why.
Very quick for both of you has just been unsurpassed. Chair of that panel. Okay, so I'll ask Dr. Montoya to share the fitness report and her all report today. Thank you so much. Okay, thank you. And I'd like to add my thanks to Stephen Christian. Thank you so much. And I also want the cheer up is that we're getting into back to school. So it is hard to believe that we're already in back to school mode. Looking forward to students moving into the residence halls, August twelfth through fourteenth. New student welcome events start on August sixteenth, and fall classes begin August. So I wanted to take just a moment and ask if I call on Lori McDonald and Sean Lou, but either one of them can share with us kind of these plans and lead up in excitement to getting ready to get back to school. So Sean and Lori, if you have to. So we took care of the downtime comments, but since somebody's finished up first off. So far, we have heard you this on track, but we do have a lot of people arriving today.
So fifty six hundred students total moving in in the next week. We actually have a thousand that are coming early. So we're moving with it, and so they getting taken their courses, so.
How many?
A thousand.
Thousand, wow.
We anticipate opening at a hundred and three percent occupancy this year, which is a good thing. So that that is not us putting folks into triples and all those types of things. So as you know, we have first year student guarantee between that last week. We're very excited about that. A lot of hard work by our team. As part of that, we were actually able to house a hundred and fifty upper division students at our Sunside Apartments, our family and grand would have them. And so that's a great revenue boost for the institution as well. As Dr. Montoya indicated, our kickoff events start on the twelfth. We have move in events, one of the biggest ones, the Launch Lounge at Collar Village, which is just an opportunity for students to be able to see, you know, we've got thanks there, our alumni association, et cetera. Just participate and and kind of get a early understanding of what's student life here is all beneath us. So we're very excited about that overall, and I'll also highlight our partnership with IKEA. That became a huge hit for us last year, so. Um, that became a huge hit for us last year. So IKEA's workforce, their cast rapid folks, the folks that will assemble furniture and all that kind of stuff, they actually come out here and help our students move in. Uh, so it was literally an army last year, um, only had to wait probably, I would say about five to ten minutes to get all of your stuff moved up to your room. Um, so a great service for our students, uh, and with our construction over the next site. So we're very excited for moving. Uh, we, we kind of call this our, uh, our housing Christmas. Uh, it's, it's the big event for us every year, uh, but very excited about our, our occupancy, very excited about it.
I think this week just started very marching band practicing. That's my first line.
May, maybe a couple of questions. Tell, tell us a little something about the incoming class, some numbers, how big, where they're all from.
Maybe I'll invite all of you, please jump forward. They're always our senior vice president for enrollment strategy and student success. Can you share some characteristics of the class?
Sure, thank you. I'm happy to be put on the slide.
You're welcome.
We're very excited. We have seen a real, uh, big increase in demand in students from Utah. So we're going to go from last year's incoming first year class of six thousand to at least sixty-six hundred. I wish I knew exactly that number, but it'll be, um, mostly breaching increase in residents. Um, but we also are seeing an increase in our popularity with non-renewables. So across the country, we have seen some increases in market share in different states where it's really hard to get students. Um, we're still struggling in Texas. Um, but that's, that's not uncommon. Um, the characteristics of the student that, that I know about that are coming is it'll be our most talented group in terms of their high school GPA. Um, but at the same time, because of our program to reach out to, um, Utah younger students and commit to them earlier and assure them that they have a future here, there's also a good number of students who are going to need extra help to be successful here. So we're, have planned underway now to stand up the kind of support services or expand them in terms of tutoring um, and other kinds of academic supports. So that that cohort that has increased below, I think at three point two or around three point two, um, is of some concern to me. Um, other qualities that are different, it's about the same split in terms of men and women in this in the past. The counties of Utah are fairly well represented. Um, we're continuing to see momentum from programs that we launched just a couple of years ago that are helping us in Utah counties and some other places where we've had some more difficulty getting students to come to the University of Utah. As you already heard, so already Rush is starting today, so you're going to see a lot of their activity on campus. Um, they're not going to know where to go for all the things that they're looking for. And I want to wish everybody's health is being the, the wayfinding assistance and others as we welcome this new classroom campus. Are there any questions that I can try and answer?
So do you know if our diverse students, if that number's gone up or gone down or?
I don't want to just say off the top of my head, it's not in bad shape or I would absolutely know that, that that's a very important.
It's continued to increase. Diversity of the class has continued to increase. And we'll get to it. No, they're not fine, but we can get through.
But sure, yeah. Any other questions?
You, you were saying our in-state population, uh, if this coming class is higher than last year or did I hear that correctly?
The numbers on both fronts are up significantly. That's why we're going to be six, seven hundred students larger. And thankfully, the heroic efforts of housing, all of those students have been very, very important.
My health, I missed it. Swear your career starts next week, but that's where my head is.
Uh, one thousand three hundred and seven. Yeah, I, I will also add, uh, with that fill rate, we still have a robust waitlist. So all remaining spots actually open up as a free for all this morning at ten AM, um, and we just basically go on. So we have an exhaustive upper division waitlist as well. And so with the strength of the incoming class plus our upper division students, we are not worried about them on that.
Thank you guys so much. We were talking about how long it's been. Uh, want just a few other announcements, uh, and many of you attended, but I want to just give a shout out to the opening of the Ellis Gags Applied Science Building, the ribbon cutting, which completes the proper science on blast. Really a wonderful event, a celebration of science. Uh, the best part was the governor making a commitment to science and to the advancement of science and research. So that was wonderful. I really want to thank all of our, um, Dean Peter Trapp in particular and his leadership in that. It was a wonderful event. I also want to acknowledge a forthcoming leadership change at Princeton Cancer Institute. Uh, Mary Beckerly announced her plans to step down effective September one. She has held the CEO role since two thousand and six. She's just an incredible leadership run. And it has been announced that Dr. Brad Harens, Professor of Oncological Sciences, will take that home. So we are excited about this transition and there'll be more to come as we celebrate Dr. Beckerly's shift. I will, for my report, I will point you to the report that is in the store in the minutes. And he first you to take a look at some of the items in the report that talks about making a long plan. Uh, which is an effort that we have, we started and is a framework that we're going to continue to grow out. There's a website that talks about our major projects, including some blogs that we're sharing to explain how things work and what our projects are at the university. And for example, one focus on why we're working to improve scheduling in an effort to create better access to classes for students and to improve their graduation rates. We get the classes they need when they. This is one example. Also, another example is, uh, the costs of different programs and that tells for themselves cost the same. So we are continuing to work to improve how we manage our operations. And this is a process fully focused around centering on mission and making sure that we're outgaining resources, very careful of position. Uh, we're not at the information calendar yet. Uh, we get to that in a few years, but I do want to bring your attention to, I know you all have reviewed it. Our new and improved international MOB process. And I want to thank all of senior leadership on campus, including him, but not at the Senate on improving that process and ensuring that he goes forward in a good way, in a thoughtful way and in a intentional way. So I want to thank Evan Center for the partnership on that. And with that, I will turn back to you. Thank you, Dr. Montoya. And I will say I'm so excited about the work that's been done to be more efficient. Therefore, we, uh, are prudent and responsible for last year dollars, donor dollars, tuition dollars, and getting most thankful about that. At the same time, we in improving our excellence league. And the, the product we provide is, um, the most beneficial and the highest caliber. And that's hard work and I know how much effort you've put into it and appreciate you doing that. You know, it's a mandate from the state, from the legislature, but also from the board to be excellent and make sure that we're a great student. And thank you for all that hard work. Um, I will now turn the time over to, for what health sciences report.
Dr. Carter's traveling, so just, I don't, I don't think we have it ever, I would just refer to it.
Yeah, so everyone, I, I, we have a report for Brian Carter and your documents online. So if you, hopefully you take a look at those, these new assignments, we're doing a help sign. It says, I'll turn it over to Alex now for the ASU reaffirm.
I want to begin by saying I'm happy to see you, Steve and Christian as well. I know you've been great advocate. I haven't been here for a few months, but it's been very exciting how the grab gets you out of this student body of all, so. Please want to say thank you from us. Uh, with the ASU report this week or this month, uh, the two primary functions of ASU, one, programming events, number two, student advocacy, student voice. In regards to our programming, we wanted to just announce two events that we have planned for this fall. We're really excited about. The first one is a Red Fest Battle Advanced event for homecoming week. So we're going really in a homecoming department with alumni to recreate a rich traditional experience for our students. So this is a really fun engaging opportunity for students to showcase their talents and I just had a really fun time as we prepare for homecoming week. The second event is a ski rail jam. This was done fifteen years ago. Here at the University of Utah is really successful. So we're excited to bring back this ski rail jam. It's going to be on center of campus. We know it's a big demographic of our student body. A lot of students are really excited about this. We've allocated funds, we're working with the student engagement office to create this event. In regards to student voice and advocacy, one of the things that we've been thinking about recently is how can we better show the board of trustees what the student voice is currently. We know that I sound this boring, it's great to be my input insights, but we need to be very useful and beneficial for you all to be able to see um, a more detailed student voice throughout the school year, throughout the months. And so one of them to really decide about this year is the new Utah three sixty app. We partnered with several names in the top product team. And on the app, we're going to put a, a new group, it's a student forum, it's going to be a student voice forum. And so with this group, students will be able to publicly post any concerns, thoughts they have for the university. Obviously be screened, just make sure it's appropriate, but will be posted there. So that way the trustees can read through and just see what students are thinking about, what they're looking at. That way we can come to these meetings, you, you all have better insights what students are thinking.
Yeah, that, that would be great. A lot of what we like to think of doing is all about the students and I, I believe it is, maybe not, but if you're some more of the voice.
So I, I'll reach out to y'all once that's, uh, uploaded and developed, that we can get going forward with that. And then the second thing as well, we've been working on is our student government legislation. It's a huge part of what our student government does. I don't think a lot of people are very aware. There are a lot of great student leaders who write bills and resolutions and we want to as well show you all what they're writing, what they're thinking about, what they're advocating for. And so attached to our report today, I have numerous joint bills from our last school year. I think there's some of those, they're really, really great changes we made to our constitution and hopefully next month's meeting will have a lot of resolutions for more student voice and advocacy side. That way you can read through those as well. So just be on the lookout, uh, hopefully every trustee meeting, we can bring, uh, some of those resolutions that have been written and passed. They've been signed off by the vice president, Senator Ferris, the booster. So that's.
I'll turn the time over now to President Richard Price to report on the platform to be set up.
Thank you very much, Katie. Um, good morning trustees. Uh, thanks for reading my report, which you should have in Word docs. In it, I reviewed the activities of the Senate Executive Committee over the past two of our scheduled three summer meetings. I discussed the two principal actions it took on behalf of the recessed Senate uh, to confirm changes to policy that protect post-doctoral fellow employees and to approve the elimination of eighty-one inactive programs as part of our HP two sixty-five compliance efforts. Uh, but since my subsequent reports this year will focus on meetings of the full Senate, whose agenda the EC sets every month, I wanted to highlight what else the Executive Committee did and does on its behalf and why it's important. In addition to those two executive actions, the EC will also have by next week heard proposals to discontinue five other programs to introduce three new ones, including one on AI, where we have to have a very complicated discussion about how AI education is going to work on campus, whether it's going to vary from department to department or have a kind of common core of central courses from computer science and philosophy. Um, so those are the kinds of conversations that happen in the EC. Uh, we will have approved two college charters, uh, launched or two new cutting edge research centers, read seven year reviews of four departments. And we're performing quality control so that by the time those presentations reach the full Senate and eventually you, they are the best versions of themselves and their sponsors are ready to answer every question that's put to them. Why have two layers of review instead of one? Because getting things right the first time avoids the far costlier inefficiency of having to start over or of having to fix things midstream. Finally, the EC is grateful to spend hours in discussion with senior leadership. An investment in communication which likewise pays dividends. When administration and faculty work together to achieve the same goal, we get there a lot faster and more sustainably rather than working in isolation. Thanks to President Randall, Senior Vice President Montoya, and Senior Vice President Carter for appreciating this. Uh, and to all of you for the vital roles that you yourselves play in the shared governance process. So thank you and thanks especially to Steve and Christian for your service.
For that report, we appreciate the partnership that we have and shared elements and the vital role that our faculty faculty provide in research and education. Um, and just creating a community here for our students and for faculty and and for our community. So thank you. I know it takes a lot of work to do all of these things to approve them, to understand and get the it seems so simple, but it, but it isn't. And we appreciate your work, always seeking the student and their experience forefront of our mission and our goals, so.
So happy and proud to do it.
Well, we appreciate all you do.
Can we, can we just add, the, the academic sense has been wonderful to work with under your leadership and, and your predecessor. Thanks, especially my predecessor. You had a tremendous predecessor, meaning, uh, you know, the, the academic program optimization effort in which you embarked, I think was a model for communication, shared governance, the, the collaboration uh, between the academic senate, the department chairs, uh, the deans, under the leadership of, of a tremendous provost. I think we, uh, have been a model for other universities and how it worked. Um, how, how to communicate, how to look at data, that, you know, to make intentional informed decisions and, and how to truly work in a, in a partnership. Thank you. Thank you. We're, we're, we're all committed to the same mission. I think that's, it's nice to see that type of coordination. Please express our appreciation to the colleagues.
I'll convey it. Thank you.
Staff council report. Brian Gordon, the president, will report on their path.
Good morning, everyone. Brian Gordon. Um, so July is just kind of our ramp up, uh, period. Uh, our new members have joined this council. Uh, they have been assigned to their different committees and their chairs have reached out, um, and I believe started with them. Um, we have a, uh, orientation coming up on the twenty-second of this month for those new people to, you know, kind of introduce them to what it means to be on staff now. Um, and our new executive committee has, uh, has been elected as well by Ali, being our next president. Um, and I'm, this is actually my last meeting. I've accepted a position outside of the U, so Ali will be taking over. So you'll have her for two weeks. What was that? Where are you going? Stanford. It's been great working with you all and I'm still in the community and happy. She's much better than I.
We've had a great summer so far, lots of gathering. Um, tonight, uh, a group of alumni will be gathering in the Rocky Mountains for the annual. So I'm actually jealous I'm here. A couple of really, um, exciting things. A lot of you earlier this year would have received, the alumni would have received a little yellow card that was a part of gathering the history as part of the hundred and seventy-fifth anniversary of this university. Uh, we have received over twenty thousand phone calls, people call in to report about their story and their memories of the. Um, a number of those will become part of a book, uh, a volume of history books about the history of the university. So we are excited about that and the success that we've had there. Um, those continue to be, uh, different activities related to the hundred and seventy-fifth anniversary that celebration that will be a part of, that we began on October sixth to assist you with. And we are excited for all the things that this great alumni staff are doing and we just welcomed ninety board members and everyone. Excited to be here at us.
I mean, a hundred and twenty-five years, great celebration, very fond of it last time. Where we from and where we're going and and all of that. So thank you. Appreciate your work. Um, we now have an information agenda.
This is.
I'm sorry, but we brought your information agenda. There's the Health U H C Financial Pulse, which I always find ready to see in the CRH here, Enterprise is doing. There's a naming of the Chris and Summer Gibson down chair, grateful for. Notice, we have property recently, some of the Marion Gouins and Richard Park, which will be critical to our expansion of research at Ethical Health Sciences. It was an incredible opportunity for us. And the International, I want to be the proof of consciousness that you're talking, talked about. If there's no, where there's thoughts, I'm gonna give you that.
Our last thing, we couldn't go 15 minutes old.
I'll get my stuff and leave. Yeah, even if it's not signed on.
But thank you all again for all of your support. Thank you all for being here and for all that you do. Thank you, and motion to adjourn.
When do you take my ground?